Every public body shall give notice of the date, time, and location of its meetings other than special emergency or continued meetings at least three working days in advance by posting such notice on its official public government website at Bennie, placing such notice in a prominent public location at which the notices are regularly posted, and placing such notice at the office of the clerk of the public body or in the case of a public body that has no clerk at the office of the chief administrator. Reasonable notice under the circumstances of special emergency or continued meetings shall be given contemporaneously with the notice provided to the members of the public, of the policy body conducting the meeting. Ms. Tanner, has today's school board meeting been properly certified?
Yes, Madam Chair. On December 27, 2019, notice was provided, fulfilling all criteria VA Code Chapter 37.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. I duly called this meeting to order. Good afternoon, everyone. Ms. Tanner, if you could please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Here.
Planton?
He is en route.
Okay. Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Here.
Gabriel?
Here.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to enter into closed session? Move to go into closed session.
Second.
You said Martin and Smith?
I think Ms. Smith was first.
You said Martin and Smith?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Move that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of Section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for: A) Discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection 1 of the above cited code section. The subjects of this portion of the session are discussion of today's regular personnel agenda and discussion of particular candidates and possible contract provisions for the position of superintendent; B) Discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record pursuant to subsection 2 of the above cited code section. The subject of this section of the session is the discussion of today's regular student support services agenda; C) Consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members concerning actual or probable litigation or specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 8 of the above cited section code. The subjects of this section of the motion are consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members concerning the personnel and student support matters identified above. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Planton? Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
I just have a question. Attorney Cloud, does the motion allow if we have questions related to any of the updates related to investigations that we have been dealing with?
No, those could be added if you have questions about specific investigations. Are they personnel matters or...?
Well, if it...I wasn't sure, because I wasn't sure if we were going to get updates on that or not, and I just wanted to make sure that...
Not that I know of. There are no updates planned.
So, Mr. Jordan, I would say that in the spirit of working together, if you have a question about items that will be discussed for closed session, it would probably be good to reach out to Dr. Birdsong to ask about investigation, whatnot, and if you want to have those discussed in the closed session, certainly, you know, we can discuss it and make sure that that's added. And so, really, the question is, is Dr. Birdsong prepared to answer any questions? But I don't know if you communicated that with her, so I would say I would not agree with talking about any items unless it has been already discussed with Dr. Birdsong.
So, I wasn't asking anyone to agree or disagree. I was just simply asking for clarification on the motion, because I just heard the motion. That's all.
Okay.
And I appreciate the opportunity to ask my question, so thank you.
So, I mean, in general, the motion is just covering, other than discussing the personnel, the usual personnel agenda and the usual student agenda, would be the discussion of particular candidates for superintendency and possible contract provision.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our school board meeting. Tonight, we are on an off-meeting date just because of the way that the new year landed on a Wednesday. I promise that in February and March, we'll be back on schedule with the first and third Wednesday of the month being our regularly scheduled meetings. However, in April, I think spring break might interfere with our meeting, so we'll be back to doing some alterations of our meeting schedule. But we're really happy to have all of you with us tonight, our staff members, our parents, community stakeholders, students. We have a whole, full of champions behind us. So, without further ado, we'll go ahead and get started with our meeting this evening. Ms. Tanner, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Bassin?
Here.
Campson?
Here.
Planton?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Gabriel?
Present.
Next item on the agenda, the presentation of the colors and the Pledge of Allegiance. Our student representative on the board, Ms. Faith Hanley.
They're coming.
Okay. Faith?
Good evening. This has also felt to be turned off during the course of the week. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors. It was presented by Maury High School and J.R.A.T.C. under the direction of Commander Ross Mobila. Please rise and remain standing for the presentation of colors and the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. Right. Come on. Up. Order. Arms. Left. Face. Present. Go. Ready. Cut.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Hands. Ready. Cut. Right. Face. Heart. Arms. All right. march.
All girls. I know. I know. I know. Okay. It's consensus, we're all impressed it was all girls. Yeah, let's give them a hand. Okay, we may be seated. Item 3.04, our musical performance tonight by Ruffner Academy student Nathaniel Scott and his teacher Tyler...is it Badge or Bage?
Bage.
Bage. Okay. I'm sorry, hello. Okay.
We have a violin duet for you this evening, Bach Minuet in G. Hope you enjoy.
(music playing)
We have a violin duet for you this evening, Bach Minuet in G. Hope you enjoy. (music playing) Yes, and if the principals can come forward. Ms. Lawrence is here as well, and Ms. Wade Jenkins?
I'm gonna get that, yes. Thank you. How we gonna do this? Well, this thing I haven't had dinner.
(laughter) (laughter) (laughter)
Nathaniel, when did you start taking violin lessons?
I started when I was in sixth grade.
At Ruffner?
I started at Blair.
At Blair, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Very impressive. Wonderful.
(speaking Spanish)
Nathaniel, we are very proud of you. Very proud of you. Continue to represent our division well in all that you do and the repertoire that you will continue to expand. And thank you very much, Mr. Gage Bage, for being a wonderful instructor and coming here to accompany him tonight. He's the star tonight, but you have helped facilitate that. Thank you. Since we're on the topic of Ruffner, I know that they will be having their jazz music performance on Friday as a fundraiser for their jazz ensemble, and that will be this Friday evening at Ruffner. Okay. Next item on the agenda, item 3.05, the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Planton, members of the board, and members of our community. We have a fairly short video to share with you this evening that focuses on some exciting things that have taken place within the school division over the last few weeks. In keeping with our almost monthly tradition, our video footage this evening will reflect inspiring recordings of teaching and learning in Norfolk Public Schools to include some outstanding learning opportunities that our students have experienced through extra and co-curricular activities that our school division provides. So, without further ado, Mrs. Tanner?
Yes, Channel 47, please show the video.
Fifth-grade students at the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood learned some valuable math lessons during the Fourth Annual Young Chefs Competition. Throughout the event, students were responsible for properly measuring ingredients and carefully preparing their dishes with help from parents and volunteers. This year, the event partnered with Feast Virginia, a 12-week health and wellness program that focuses on healthy eating on a budget. Students were additionally charged with coming up with recipes that cost $1.25 or less per serving.
I am so excited, I can hardly stand it. It's amazing, and this is exactly where we need to be. In the fifth grade, kids need to know, they need to start finding out what the real world is all about, and being able to make foods on affordable budgets is immensely helpful.
How can we make real life come alive, you know, in the classroom? So, by having this challenge, they had to do the math, they had to break down ingredient costs, they had to use a lot of division, of course, and serving sizes to figure out how to get that ingredient cost down so they could get to that $1.25 per serving. So, making math real life.
He is learning mathematics. He is learning how to count cups, pints, teaspoons, tablespoons, divide it into serving sizes, and he's learning with math, money, because it has to be $1.25 per serving, so he's learning so much from this one experience.
After all the appetizers, entrees, sides, and desserts were completed, judges tasted the dishes and voted to determine the winners. Regardless of the outcome, these fifth graders enjoyed learning firsthand how math is used in everyday life.
So, we know through that authentic learning piece, through project-based learning, that this is something that they're always going to remember, and even our eighth graders now who went through this four years ago, they're jealous. They want to say, "How can we do a Young Chefs Competition in eighth grade?", but they remember this, and this is something they'll carry with them through life, and that really meaningful piece of how math really comes into your life and how important it is.
Oh, yeah, I think it's fantastic, because a lot of times, students think that, "Oh, why am I learning this?", but this is a way for them to realize that the things you are learning in school are applicable in the real world.
Students at Granby High School and representatives from Chartway Federal Credit Union celebrated the grand reopening of their student-run credit union. Through this partnership, students gain real-life work experience while learning about managing money and financial responsibility.
What we're doing here is really celebrating the opportunity for students to learn. Being on the job, they have an opportunity to learn teller work, they have an opportunity to learn marketing work, be business managers, so to speak, and they're also here to talk about financial education, which is super important.
Kids, they can come in and they can do transactions with Chartway Credit Union, they can deposit money for their bank account. Yeah, it teaches them financial responsibility.
I'm very excited to be a part of Chartway, seeing as though I have been a student teller for two years now, and I like where the program is going. The most important thing that I learned is how to manage money and how to keep yourself on a budget.
Third, fourth, and fifth graders from Laramore and Terrleton Elementary Schools enjoyed a family coding night at Terrleton just prior to the winter break. The event featured a coding exercise that enabled students and parents to use the Scratch program to create their very own video game, and there was also an opportunity to program robots. For more news stories and other information about Norfolk Public Schools, watch NPS Now on WNPSTV 47 or the NPS website.
So, thank you again to Channel 47 for putting together such an amazing video. We really appreciate that. Dr. Gabriel, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Next item, 3.06, the school board clerk's report, and we have quite a few recognitions this evening.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair. Dr. Gabriel, Acting Superintendent Dr. Birdsong, board members, and attendees for tonight's school board meeting. We've got a packed house today. Glad to see you all here, but please, I'd like to ask the board members to come to the front of the dais for a special presentation and to shake some hands this evening. I would like to begin by recognizing our championship football teams from Lake Taylor High School and Maury High School. I'd like to first recognize the Lake Taylor Varsity Football Team under the leadership of head coach Hank Sawyer and his dynamic coaches, who helped lead the Titans to obtain their third championship title after winning the VHSL for a state championship game against Tuscaloosa Corrora High School. Players and coaches, please come through. Keep the applause going. We want everybody. Keep the applause going, we got a long line. And we'd like to recognize our principal, Letitia Wade Jenkins. Congratulations, Lake Taylor Titans. And Bobby Pettibacker, A.D. Yes, give them another round of applause. I'm gonna let you pause for just one second, but stay to your feet. We have another round of applause for...I would like to recognize the Maury High School Varsity Football Team under the leadership of Coach DiRee McCain, a former Commodores wide receiver, and his dynamic coaches, who assisted the Commodores to their first state title in 80 years. Over Stonebridge, as the VHSL Class V Champions. So, players and coaches, please come forward. the same day to win championships in the state of Virginia, so that's a great accomplishment. So, at this time, I'd like to formally recognize Coach Sawyer and Coach McCain, have them come forward and give them a special presentation from the school board and the superintendent. And then also, they have a presentation for you all. So, first, we want to give you this as a token of appreciation, Coach Sawyer. And we have a photographer, we want to take pictures.
(inaudible) Where's the mic? Most of the time, I'm not lost for words, but I'm just so excited for what the players at Lake Taylor High School, as well as Maury High School, have done. I mean, this is my 40th year coaching, and I've never seen anything like it. Now, when we present these tokens of love from Lake Taylor and Maury, once we give you the shirts, I guess y'all will figure them out, okay? Yes, you gonna say something, Coach? Go ahead, go ahead, Coach.
Coach Sawyer said it best. He's been doing it for a long time, and he's done it the right way, and I'm just trying to be the next person, but I am doing it the right way from the city, and just thankful for all the support and everything that you guys have done for us, both teams, and we appreciate you guys dearly, so thank you.
Did we miss your name? Is this Campson? Campson, bless you, sweetie. I know you. Martin, I know the faces. Believe it or not, I watched the school board. I tried to see if any money gonna come our way. Student, Lake Taylor High School, I know who she is. Bless you. Student, Maury High School, bless you. All right. Okay. I got one jacket. This one is... Believe it or not, we go way back to Lake Taylor High School. I mean, Grand High School. Grand High School, so you can tell how long I've been in it, a long time. But I'm just so thankful for everybody, and not just the school board members, but Dr. Birdsong and everybody else down here that works down here at the school board building. And to win a state championship, because we've been to five and fortunate enough to win three, it takes everybody. It takes everybody in this school system, in this city, to embrace that and to make that happen. But even more important, it takes my principal, it takes Maury's principal, but even more important, it takes those players out there. It takes all those players out there. (applause)
Yes, and if the principals can come forward. Ms. Lawrence is here as well, and Ms. Wade Jenkins?
I'm gonna get that, yes. How we gonna do this? This thing I haven't had dinner. (laughter) (laughter)
We're done. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I love this shirt. That's so nice.
Let's give them one more round of applause. What a great accomplishment for our students. Now, I'd like to share our January observances. Governor Ralph Northern recognizes Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week on January 19 through the 25, 2020. "The role of the principal as the instructional leader of the school is key to the success of any school, and they work diligently to help students and teachers excel." Says, "Whereas school principals work cooperatively to direct, develop, and inspire all members of the school staff and student body, and to communicate effectively with parents to engage them in the learning process, and whereas principals serve as educational leaders, responsible for managing the policies, regulations, and procedures necessary to ensure a safe and effective learning environment for all students in Virginia's public and private schools, and whereas principals and teachers are entrusted with the opportunity and the responsibility of guiding, directing, nurturing, mentoring, and imparting knowledge to our children while they are at school, and whereas principals work collaboratively with teachers, staff, and students, parents, and the community at large to proactively prepare students to be self-reliant and productive citizens, and whereas Virginia School Principal Appreciation Week is an opportunity to recognize the hard work of Virginia school principals and to recognize the importance of principals in ensuring that every child has access to a quality education. Now, therefore, it be resolved that we, the Norfolk School Board, do hereby recognize January 19 and the 20 through the 25, 2020 as Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week." Are there any principals in the audience tonight? Well, we just had two, so we honored them as well. So, Dr. Cataldo, can you come forward and accept this on behalf of our principals? Let's give them a round of applause. We always like to let you know for the next month what the February observances are going to be. So, National School Counseling Week is February 30 through the 7. National School Counseling Week 2020 is sponsored by the American School Counsel Association. We recognize the unique contributions of our school counselors and the profound impact they have in assisting our students to achieve school success and plans for their future careers. We take this week to say thank you to Norfolk School counselors. National PTA Take Your Family to School Week is February 16 through the 23. The National PTA has recognized PTAs across America for over 120 years, and this week is a time to acknowledge the important work they do for Norfolk Public Schools. Congratulations to our Norfolk Council PTAs under the leadership of Sharice Newsom and her executive board, who has 33 act-
He's been doing it for a long time, and he's done it the right way. And I'm just trying to be the next person, but I am doing it the right way from the city. And just thankful for all the support and everything that you guys have done for us, both teams. And we appreciate you guys dearly, so thank you.
This Camp, Campson, bless you, sweetie. I know you, honey. Martin, I know, I know the faces, I watch, believe it or not, I watch the school board. I try to see if any money gonna come our way. Student, Lake Taylor High School, I know who she is. Bless you. Student, Maury High School, bless you. All right. Okay.
Exactly how I wanted it, sorry.
This one is... Believe it or not, we go way back to Lake Taylor High School. I mean, Grandpa High School. Grandpa High School, so you can tell how long I've been in it, a long time. But I'm just so thankful for everybody, and not just the school board members, but Dr. Burison and everybody else down here that works down here at the school board building. And to win a state championship, because we've been to five and fortunate enough to win three, it takes everybody. It takes everybody in this school system, in this city, to embrace that and to make that happen. But even more important, it takes my principal, it takes Maury's principal, but even more important, it takes those players out there. It takes all those players out there.
Yes, and if the principals can come forward, Ms. Lawrence is here as well. And Ms. Wade Jenkins.
I'm gonna get that, yes, thank you. And how we gonna do this? Well, good thing I haven't had jelly.
We're done, thank you very much, thank you. Let's give them one more round of applause. What a great accomplishment for our students. Now, I'd like to share our January observances. Governor Ralph Northern recognizes Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week on January 19 through the 25th, 2020. The role of the principal as the instructional leader of the school is key to the success of any school, and they work diligently to help students and teachers excel. Says, whereas school principals work cooperatively to direct, develop, and inspire all members of the school staff and student body, and to communicate effectively with parents to engage them in the learning process, and whereas principals serve as educational leaders, responsible for managing the policies, regulations, and procedures necessary to ensure a safe and effective learning environment for all students in Virginia's public and private schools, and whereas principals and teachers are entrusted with the opportunity and the responsibility of guiding, directing, nurturing, mentoring, and imparting knowledge to our children while they are at school, and whereas principals work collaboratively with teachers, staff, and students, parents, and the community at large to proactively prepare students to be self-reliant and productive citizens. And whereas, Virginia School Principal Appreciation Week is an opportunity to recognize the hard work of Virginia school principals and to recognize the importance of principals in ensuring that every child has access to a quality education. Now, therefore, it be resolved that we, the Norfolk School Board, do hereby recognize January 19 and the 20th through the 25th, 2020, as Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week. Are there any principals in the audience tonight? Well, we just had two, so we honored them as well. So Dr. Cataldo, can you come forward and accept this on behalf of our principals? Let's give them a round of applause. We always like to let you know for the next month what the February observances are gonna be. So National School Counseling Week is February 3rd to the 7th. National School Counseling Week 2020 is sponsored by the American School Counsel Association. We recognize the unique contributions of our school counselors and the profound impact they have in assisting our students to achieve school success and plans for their future careers. We take this week to say thank you to Norfolk School counselors. National PTA Take Your Family to School Week is February 16 to the 23rd. The National PTA has recognized PTAs across America for over 120 years, and this week is a time to acknowledge the important work they do for Norfolk Public Schools. Congratulations to our Norfolk Council PTAs under the leadership of Sharice Newsom and her executive board, who has 33 active PTAs in Norfolk. So we recognize our PTAs' hard work and look forward to growing our PTAs every year. The Virginia School Board Association recognizes February as School Board Appreciation Month. School boards across Virginia will be recognized during the month of February. This year's theme is Excellence Through Equity, as our seven-member elected school board and student representatives advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders on behalf of our parents, students, staff, and the community of Norfolk. There will be a special recognition in February for our school board members, so just hang on, we'll just hold tight for that. And School Board Clerk Appreciation Week is February 17 through the 21st. The VSBA recognizes this time of all school board clerks across Virginia to support school boards in so many ways by providing assistance for the many facets of their work, and also serves as a bridge of support on behalf of the school board to parents, staff, students, and the community. Career Technical and Education Month. Career Technical and Education Month is recognized for the achievements and accomplishments of CTE programs across Virginia and the nation. The theme for 2020 is Celebrate Today, Own Tomorrow, which provides Virginia schools an opportunity to showcase success stories of excellence and communicate the crucial role that CTE plays. And February is also Crossing Guard Month. A good crossing guard can help start someone's day off to the right foot. Take a moment and say thanks to your school crossing guard for the month of February. And Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tanner. The next item on the agenda, 3.07, are the citizen comments on our agenda items only. So only comments that pertain to the agenda that we have for this evening. Ms. Tanner, I know we probably have a list.
Yes, we do.
And I would ask that the speakers come forward to the podium. The podium can be adjusted to suit your height, state your name, and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools or if you are employed by the system. State your position and give facts on other relevant data. And if you represent a group or organization, ask the others to rise and be recognized. Please give any written statements or supporting material for the clerk for the record. And speakers are limited to... Speakers are limited to a one-time appearance of three minutes. When the clerk signals that your time is up, please quickly wrap up your comments. If I gavel, it is not to be rude, it is to be very considerate of everyone's time. We have a three-minute time limit. The school board does not respond to citizen remarks at the time that they are given. And so what would be included on the agenda items are items that we have on our discussion and decision agenda, which include the motion to amend the school's start time resolution, as well as any monthly financial reports and the school board code of conduct. So Ms. Tanner, if you could proceed with our speakers for this evening.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have 11 speakers. And the first one is Elizabeth Janik, followed by Christine Truman.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Janik. I'm a parent of a sixth grader and a ninth grader in Norfolk Public Schools. My ninth grader leaves to catch his bus at 6:20 a.m., currently one hour before sunrise. When he gets to the bus stop, he waits alone with... He waits either alone or with one other student. I learned in May 2018 that the school board had passed a resolution in favor of later start times for high school students, and that this change could take effect as early as the fall of 2019. More details followed. I learned that the board was taking a cue from best practices around the country, which have shown that later school start times are better for older teenagers' health and academic performance. What's more, I learned that another board goal was to make sure that no student of any age had to board a bus before 7 a.m., and that these changes would reduce the total number of morning bus daggers, actually saving the division money and addressing the chronic bus driver shortage by coordinating schedules more efficiently. Fast forward to two weeks ago, and I was disappointed, along with many board members apparently, to learn that the administration was not prepared to usher in these changes for the 2020 school year. Acting Superintendent Burdson, I don't presume to know the many planning steps that are necessary to roll out new school start times. As a non-expert, I will say that eight months does not seem like a wholly unreasonable window to make the necessary preparations. It is a false choice to say that new start times can either be rolled out poorly in 2020 or can be done right in 2021. What are the resources, the staff time, or the funds that you need to accomplish the goal that was set before you by the board? To the school board. Instead of expressing disappointment, how about asking for some accountability? Why not ask the administration for a detailed rollout plan for the fall of 2020 so you can make an informed decision as to whether or not this is feasible? If you're content to vote on a plan for 2020, then this is clearly all you will get. Thank you.
Christine Truman, followed by Sarah Fernandez.
Hi. My name's Dr. Christine Truman. I'm a psychiatrist. I've been practicing in Norfolk and Virginia Beach for approximately 15 years. I'm also a Norfolk Public School parent. I have an eighth grader in Norfolk Public Schools. I also attended several community meetings in 2018 when this decision was being considered. I shared my professional opinion based on the extensive body of research that is probably well-known. That includes the American Academy of Pediatrics and the American Psychiatric Association's position on this topic. Adolescents who get enough sleep have reduced risk of obesity, depression. They are less likely to be in automobile accidents. They have better grades. They have higher standardized test scores. And they have an overall better quality of life. Changes in the biological clock that occur at puberty cause teenagers to sleep generally between 11 p.m. and 8 a.m. Research has shown that delaying high school start times is a key factor to ensure that high school students get the sleep that they need. I don't think I need to tell any of you how important the physical and mental health of our high school students is. I'm sure you are aware that the two leading causes of death among teenagers are accidents and suicide. Sleep is a key component in preventing both of these very serious conditions. There is nothing to me that is more important than the health and well-being of our students. So the parents and community have known about this decision for an entire year. The school board has known about this decision for an entire year. And we've all known that the change would take effect in the 2021 school year. I myself moved my son from private school to public school with this change in mind, knowing that by the time he would be a high school student, his start time would be different than it is at present. There have been many community meetings, as I've said, articles in the newspaper, social media posts from the Norfolk Public School System, school board announcements on this topic from many sources. The community is aware of this. The systems in place for MPS school communication are excellent. There are effective tools in place to communicate with parents, and we're not talking about changes that will begin in one or two months. We are talking about changes that are still eight months away for anyone who is not already aware of these changes. It feels like it is a waste of our time, money, and resources, and reflects badly when a decision has been made for it then to be delayed. The first thing that came to my mind, honestly, when I heard about this delay, was Brexit. I mean, when a decision has been made, why are we [BLEEP] delaying? Sorry. Thank you.
Sarah Fernandez, followed by Jackie Glass.
Hi, my name is Sarah Fernandez, and I'm a mother of four children between the ages of one and eight. Two of my four attend Norfolk Public Schools. As a Norfolk Public Schools elementary school parent, I am in support of delaying the implementation of the start time changes, and I implore you to reconsider the time changes altogether. I, along with many other parents of elementary school students, find the thought of getting small children ready to school that early extremely difficult. More importantly, plenty of research suggests that early start times are just as detrimental to elementary school students as they are to adolescents. Studies performed on this age group have found that early start times for elementary school students have been associated with behavioral problems and poor academic performance. In addition, my friends who are working mothers of elementary school students are very concerned about finding and affording after-school childcare. At the least, delaying the start time change for another year will give parents more time to plan for the challenges it will cause. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Jackie Glass, followed by Susan Palado.
Good evening, my name is Jackie Glass. I have two little citizens in Norfolk Public School. I came here to talk to you guys about the delay of school start times. So I think that there's a lot of empathy that has to go to you guys in trying to make these decisions and rolling things out. A lot of exercising of that muscle as you try to make decisions for us. But we'd like to hope that in making these decisions, that our little citizens are the first thing and first and foremost thing in your mind as you're doing them. Last year, when you guys said that we were gonna change these start times, one of the biggest issues that we talked about was the transportation piece, right? How the... Whoever you guys sent out to kind of talk to us about it really went in detail about how it would support better transportation, whereas the elementary school routes are about 20 to 15, 15 to 20 minutes long, which would allow that trickle, those tiers to go down, where we don't have first, second, third, fourth, fifth graders on the bus stop waiting for a bus that is 30 minutes late, because that has happened consistently last year, this year, and it's unfortunate. And the health side of things. So I'm gonna talk first to that, that I don't think we really understand the panic that a parent goes through when they know that their elementary school student is still standing on the bus stop 20 minutes after the bus was supposed to show up. If that is my middle schooler, there's a different sentiment, right? Because I understand that he has a phone on him, and he can make that phone call to say, hey, Mom, the bus is running late. But when there's a younger child on that bus stop, that's a problem. And I find myself busing little citizens and going from bus stop to bus stop to bus stop, busing them to school because it's late. Why not get those kids on the bus? That was one of the main things that we talked about. And the great thing is, when I first moved to the state of Virginia, one of the first things I looked up was, can I have a latchkey kid? I know that I can get them where they need to be in the morning before I go to work, but can they get their butts in the house and be there and let me know that they're in a safe place after school? So it's really imperative that we get this underway, because you've got many parents who are looking at this as like, I know that my kid is in a safe place in the morning, and I can have eyes on them in the afternoon. And then the health side, I think the young woman really hit the nail on the head with that, of talking about our high schoolers having four, well, six of them on my block. That's a conversation that we had. And I'll even say from my standpoint, when I was a senior in high school, I did a... I was a homecoming queen, president of student council. And then, at the end, I found myself exhausted from all my AP classes, staying up late for basketball games. And I actually started ditching first period for the better half of my senior year. Yes, I graduated. But I did that because my sleep was important. I got up, watched the news, and took myself to school. I think, you guys, this is really about managing our expectations. We are expecting something. You told us that it was coming, let's make it happen, Captain, right? But again, exercising that empathy muscle, I think that we need to just move forward. If you guys do not pass this resolution, I think that you deserve, we deserve a good reason as to why. At least give us that.
Susan Palado. Patty Rialy.
Good evening. I have a son who's at Norview, he's a ninth grader. And I have a business in Norfolk, business owner. And I am in a deadline-based industry. So I am very familiar with dealing with deadlines. And what I do know about deadlines is it takes perseverance. We've made a decision in May of 2018 to do this thing. So let's do it. We know it's established fact that this is the right thing to do. You all voted on it, we need action. We voted you into this, into your offices, to take action. So let's do this. I know for a fact, because I've been in my career for 25 years, that if you keep pushing that deadline, there's always gonna be an excuse of why you don't do this thing. There's always gonna be a reason. Let's be the example and show them, and when I say them, our children, what it is to make a deadline. We ask them to turn in homework. We ask them to take tests. There is a deadline for that. We expect them to make it. If they don't make it, there's punishment for that, and that's a decrease in their grade point average. We have a lot of pressure on our children. Why don't we have it on ourselves? I want these young men come by with something on their back, and it said, 48 minutes to win it. A lifetime to think about it. Do you really want to think about this wrong decision all your life? Let's do the right thing. You voted on this, May of 2018. We're coming to May of 2020. Please, do this. We can do it. Let's be the city that we are, the best city in Hampton Roads, and show what it is that the Norfolk Public School System is made of. I'm proud to say my son goes to Norview, so proud. This principal that we have is amazing. He and the staff that work there deserve us standing up and saying we were gonna go through with our promises. I implore you, as a citizen of Norfolk, a business owner of Norfolk, I know what it is to meet with challenges, with deadlines. We can do this. We can do this, and I implore you, please, please do this. Be the example. Respect the team that just walked by you and did it. We can do it. Thank you.
Patty Rialy, followed by Barrett Hicks.
Hey, hello. I'm a clinical psychologist in the area. I've been working here for over 20 years. A lot of that time, I've been working a lot with children and adolescents. In my experience, Dr. Truman has told us about a lot of the different benefits of later start times for adolescents, and I concur with her. And just to share with you some of my actual personal experience with them, I've had multiple, multiple adolescents come into my office and tell me that they will try their hardest to schedule their important classes later in the day, because they're gonna fail them if they're in the morning. They're gonna sleep through them in the morning. And then if they do get to switch them, then they actually, their grades pick up for that. And then also with kids, younger kids, I see them come into my office, and the parents will say, yeah, they have great mornings, and then they fall apart in the afternoons. It makes perfect sense to swap the times. I'm also a public school parent. I have two children at Granby High School, a freshman and a junior. And they are zombies when they get up in the morning. They have to leave the house at 6:30 to catch a bus. It's dark, it's cold, they're half asleep. They get there, they start, and hopefully, they're mostly awake. But I think that they would do much better starting later in the day. One argument has been made that people aren't aware of this. I don't know a single parent of any of my kids' friends who are not aware that the start time was supposed to change, starting fall of 2020. Not a single parent. Nobody has said, oh, really? We're switching? No. Everybody knows this. My kids are both on the crew team at Granby High, and we are making adjustments because, right now, they do a study hall after school so that then they can be there until the coach can get there and they run to practice. That won't happen starting next year, at least, we're hoping. We're actually trying to train some people to be able to have a commercial driver's license to drive a bus, because they have buses, they just don't have bus drivers to drive us to the practice site. We're preparing. Everybody that I know is making preparations. We're ready. Hopefully, y'all are too. Thank you.
Barrett Hicks, followed by Rosemary Delgado.
Evening. How you guys doing? I'm Barrett Hicks. I'm the... Tonight, I'm representing the Tywood Connection Alumni Association. Back on Saturday of this past, on the 11th, we put on a Breakfast of Champions brunch for these young men that walked in the doors this evening. And I just want to thank the school board, city of Norfolk, for coming out and supporting these young folks, because this is what it's about. We have some great folks in the building, Super Bowl champions, Canadian Football League champions, some of the greatest athletes that have ever been on an NFL field. And these young men were able to rub shoulders with these guys, to actually have, talk about their experiences. Tywood Connection Alumni Association is coming together... Tywood Connection Alumni Association is coming together in order to support what Norfolk Public Schools and the schools around the region are trying to do, bringing together the athletes. We feel like the athletes are going to make the difference. We're here to help. It was such a great day to have those athletes in the house, but more so for them athletes to truly understand that the hard work and dedication. We had Mr. William Fuller, longtime NFL great, in the house giving a presentation, talking about that, you know, working to make it happen. But what was even more important to me was the coming together of different organizations throughout the city that supported us just by the asking. We told them about that we wanted to make a difference for these young folks, and we truly want to say thank you to them. Winning state championships, two in one city, now that is truly remarkable. But those young folks, Mosca Smith as well, did a great job, state runner-up. All of them are champions, true champions. But again, thank you to the board members that came out, Dr. Birdsong, Ray Sanu, Dr. Gabriel, Rodney, Tanya, thank you again. Christine, definitely for that great support. We thank you. We thank you. We are here to support Norfolk Public Schools and the region. And my core group, Mr. Vic Jones sitting over here, Maury alum, we're co-sponsoring this to make this happen. We're going to bring it together. We're going to help to show you how to make, how to take it to the top. And athletes are the key. Thank you.
Rosemary Delgado, followed by Cheryl Lacy.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rosemary Delgado. I have two young students at Sherwood Forest Elementary, preschool and kindergarten. While every student is important, no matter their age, should we send our young children out when it's still dark to catch a bus? Is that more safe? Not really. So I think we need to look at every aspect of this. This is going to be short, because I'm probably going to speak again, but I think that every aspect needs to be taken into consideration, as well as young parents, or young children with their parents, getting them off to school that early and having jobs to get to. A lot of them have, they're little, they can't fend for themselves, like you were, like you said, you know? It's a different type of terror when it's an elementary school child that has not been picked up. I don't feel safe with my child being out in the dark, a four-year-old, six-year-old, to pick up a bus. I'm not sure the start time, pushing that up, would be healthy for them either. And then, you know, take into consideration, younger kids tend to have more doctor's appointments. They're still getting used to the germs that are going on in the schools, and they catch this, catch that, and try to make earlier doctor's appointments so they don't miss school. So there's a lot more that goes into it than just, let's switch it for health, it's for all the children. It's not good for any of them. You know, our older students, they do need the mental health help and the stability and the, like, the changing times, excuse me, stuttering, in the changing times. But our young children also need to be nurtured on the way up. So I don't think, I think we should think of not switching it to, like, making the younger students be in school by 7:30 in the morning. That would not be conducive to their learning. Thank you.
Cheryl Lacy, followed by Sasha Crisaldold.
Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Gabriel, school board members, good evening. My name is Cheryl Lacy. I'm a 22-year veteran of Norfolk Public Schools, proudly at Laramie Memorial Elementary. And I would like to tell you about the flip side of this, which is, I teach at an elementary school with full-day pre-K. So our kids don't enter the building till 9:05. We don't start school till 9:30. You're talking about babies that are there all day until 4 o'clock. From their standpoint, they are so energetic and ready to go when they come that it makes sense to start earlier. They're up. We all know our kids are up early. Pre-K is full day. So our four-year-olds are there till 4 o'clock. They take a nap, but as somebody mentioned before, behavior does deteriorate by about 2 o'clock. They're done. Most of our kids are just finished. They've been there all day, they've been waiting. They come, I get to school very early, and they come almost as early as I do and wait outside or wait in the car with their parents, and it's 8 o'clock, and they can't come in till 9:05. They're raring to go, they're raring to get started. But my gosh, they are coming home after 4 o'clock when the bus brings them home and having dinner and going to bed. It doesn't leave them a lot of time to do anything, to be a child, to do their homework. From a teaching standpoint, being in a, you know, mostly all-female field, could save us a lot of leave time, because most of us have doctor's appointments, we're all girls, we have those appointments, and we don't like to take off. We put off our doctor's appointments because we don't want to take off from school. You all know it's harder to take off than it is to be there, and we want to be there. But it's very hard to find a doctor that's open. I drive 45 minutes to get to work. So I hate to do that. I try to find doctors that are open early in the morning. We all want to be there. We don't want to leave to go to a doctor's appointment. So I think it would save on teachers taking leave time as well. So I'm in favor of the change. Our school, I can tell you, Ms. Campson can tell you, because we've talked about it at school and she's volunteered, our parents all know. They're all ready, they're just waiting for you to tell them it's really going to happen. But I think our staffs have been very good about communicating that to all the staff members and the parents. So I think we're ready when you are. Thank you.
Sasha Crickold. And you can pronounce it correctly for me when you get to the microphone.
Hello. My name is Sasha Crigsfold. I'm a Norfolk City resident, and I have one child who is a Commodore. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with all of you directly. I am here to ask you to vote to begin later school start times next year, as you had previously communicated you would. In fact, in February of 2019, the Virginian Pilot reported the later start times would begin during the 2020 to 2021 school year, which was already a year later than was originally planned. You all have been discussing, considering, studying, and planning this for years. I have one child in an independent school and one in Norfolk Public School. For me, the later start time will be logistically difficult every day and some days impossible. But I know that this is what is best for our children's health. I watched your last televised school board meeting where you announced your intention to delay this change by yet another year. The reason stated at time signature 5810 was lack of lights for the athletic fields. It was also stated that there have been too many unforeseen changes this year to put this into effect next year. It was also mentioned that for some of you, this is an election year. Chairwoman Dr. Gabriel reiterated these reasons Monday night at my Civic League meeting and also said that athletic lights would cost $4 million to purchase and even more than that amount to rent, and that a proposed solution of using Old Dominion and Norfolk State Fields would not work, because it would not be fair to the schools not in close proximity to those venues. Why does the solution have to be all or nothing? Why can't the solution be a combination of using university facilities, municipal courts, renting lights, buying lights, and if schools are ending later, then perhaps some practices and games could begin earlier? And this would eliminate the challenge of getting kids back to events three to four hours after school is dismissed. Mr. Clanton, you spoke at length last school board meeting about optics, specifically around some schools always getting something and others getting nothing. This is an opportunity to give a few schools some athletic lights. It's not too late to request funds for lights as a capital improvement from city council. As for the great number of unforeseen changes this year, how can you predict what changes next year will bring? And if there are even more changes next year, then when will you provide our teenagers the later start times they were promised? Please change your perspective. Yes, there have been a lot of changes, but change is the only constant. Yes, it is an election year, but if you think you will not be re-elected, if you move forward with this and unforeseen issues arise, then please consider the perspective that you might not receive support if you do not do what you said you would. You were elected to move Norfolk Public Schools forward because we believed you could. We believed you could do hard things. Take risks. Make change happen for the benefit of our children's health. Please see, this is an opportunity for Norfolk Public Schools to lead. It's only January. You can do this. You have plans in place. Put them into action. Consider solutions that aren't from an all-or-nothing stance.
Thank you very much.
Please do this for our children next year.
Thank you.
This concludes our speakers that signed up for this evening. It's just for agenda or non-agenda? Okay. What, add your Vicky? Ms. Greco, please come to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Vicky Manugo-Greco. I'm a Maury mom, a Lake Taylor graduate of 1985, winner, winner, chicken dinner. I'm also a former special educator for NPS, and my husband and I are exceptionally proud NPS parents of two gifted students, a high school junior and an eighth grader. We're also very happy that our oldest is now a high school graduate, who's working during her gap year until she feels ready to begin college coursework and early childhood studies, which is quite different than her initial interest in mortuary science. Her younger sister, the 11th grader, also works at Starbucks in addition to taking her AP classes and plotting her future college path. Tonight, I'm continuing my tale of two sisters, which I shared with you at the May 2018 school board meeting when you all held it at Lake Taylor School, then Lake Taylor Middle School. You invited stakeholders to offer comments about changes to pattern and grade level configuration at Lake Taylor Middle, as well as later start times for high schoolers. Well, changes to Lake Taylor School have been made, but we're waiting to see which school year our high schoolers will be starting their school day later, which we know the research shows to help increase student success and health. My two daughters are very different, but I will say anecdotally that they have both benefited from having options to begin their high school day later, options that are not afforded to all NPS high school students, who we are helping to get ready for career, service, or college. My two daughters are so very different, but I'll say that they benefited from beginning their high school day. My older daughter, who graduated their high school day later. My oldest daughter graduated from Open Campus last year. She has epilepsy, she's on the autism spectrum, and she has other learning and health-related challenges. She was able to attend the afternoon session at Open Campus and benefited from the later start to her day, so she could sleep in after many a night of disturbed sleep due to the different ways her brain works. My younger daughter can count on her even blocked day at Maury High School to begin at 10:50, so she can balance the rigor and the challenges of work and extracurriculars, and she can count on that extra time to get some sleep in. This is what we know from where I sit as their mother, but evidence shows, and everyone's covered it, better sleep hygiene reduces anxiety and stress for humans, including our kids, who are suffering from uber-stress. And sometimes they take that matter in their own hands and they end their lives. So we also know that cost savings, bus drivers, less bus drivers will be needed, more efficient shifts will happen with the proposed staggers. I watched you guys deliberate two days during your governance training session. I know you all have different perspectives, different experiences, different viewpoints, but I know that you all share your commitment to doing what's best for kids. Please do that. This will help our children be ready for the world. They will be awake as they learn. Thank you.
Thank you very much to all of the speakers this evening. We appreciate your comments, coming out to the board meeting and sharing your thoughts with us. Next on the agenda is 3.08, approval of the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any further discussion of the consent agenda?
Yes. Dr. Gabriel, there is a, I believe, a typo on the norms and protocols, sorry, in the one section, placing an item on the agenda.
Yes.
There is a word "not" that I think is not supposed to be there, and it would significantly change the meaning of what we had intended there. So I don't know if you want to pull it off and...
Hold on, I'm going to pull it up real quick so we can read it.
Ms. Fessing, which section is it?
It's under the protocols, placing an item on the agenda. Here, I'm pulling it up, too. So it currently reads, "The board agrees to only state the agenda, to only state the agenda item request and not use this as an opportunity to explain why this item should be added." I believe that the "not" is to be removed, because we had talked about getting to consensus, which means providing a rationale, a rationale for why we wanted the data request. Is that...
Actually, this is, this is how it was originally written, and it was specifically said to not use this, because we wanted to have that as a very brief time and opportunity for you to list the items that you would like on the agenda, but to not use it as a prolonged time for discussion. And anyone else can support or not support that, but thank you for bringing it up. But I have always recalled it to be this way.
Okay. Then, I guess, reading it then with the next bullet, consensus of the board, if we don't know why an agenda item is being requested or a data request is being made, how do we reach consensus?
I think that that was a great discussion that we had as a board over the past two days when we had our governance training. I think that what we agreed on is that we would have future agenda items on the working session, so that we could at least get the items out there. And then what we would do is, we would have to come together and determine if these were consensus items that we wanted to have, and if Dr. Birdsong or who, administration, if there was going to be a prolonged set of time required for that, then they would share that with the board and say, this is the amount of time that it would take. I understand what you're saying. If we don't ask and deliberate at the time of the future agenda items, then when would we do that? I would say that the first item is to put the items on the agenda, discuss them with the future agenda items, and then we would come back to it at a set time at the future work session. Any other thoughts?
Madam Chair, if I can just ask, so Ms. Fessing, you sort of unreadiness with this particular item?
Well, it sounds like I'm the only one who's recalling this differently. If so, then I'm honestly not following, following the logic. I mean, I don't know how we get to consensus if we're not...
The idea is for it to be very quick and succinct, and if we can all say, yes, we agree for a discussion of school start times, to put it on the agenda, then that's fine. But what the pattern has been is that we go into lengthy discussion, and that's what we're trying to avoid. As, as the VSBA stated, first ask yourself, why am I asking for this information? Is this something that I can ask directly of the superintendent? And if not, then place it on the agenda. And then we took steps to make the tab on the thing on the agenda items.
Right. I agree, but I think you hit the nail on the head right there. Why am I asking this agenda item? So if we self-reflect and are asking ourselves that, it gives us the opportunity to then say to my, to our board colleagues, why we're asking for that agenda item? And we talked about this in the context of, these are the items, we would have a board calendar, so this future agenda item piece shouldn't take long, because we would have this board calendar with the, with the agenda topics already built into it. So it technically, you know, this is if it's a new, a new agenda topic or a new data request, that it should be succinct, but we should also have the opportunity to share why we feel it's an important topic, so that we can get to consensus.
We were, we were in the midst of dealing with the consent agenda, and I think Mr. Clanton was going in the correct direction, that seems like this is something that would be pulled from the consent agenda, allow us to discuss it prior to voting on it.
So we can pull this from the consent agenda, and we can vote on it separately. So Ms. Tanner, if you wouldn't mind, go ahead and pull this from the consent agenda, our norms and protocols, and we will make it item five... and we will make it item 5.02. And then everything else thereafter will just be changed. So other than the norms and protocols, any other items for discussion for the motion to approve the consent agenda? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye, thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 5.01, monthly financial report. Dr. Bert Song?
Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, members of the board. Thank you, Mrs. Ingram, for approaching the podium. Mrs. Ingram will provide us an overview for the December 2019 financial reports. Mrs. Ingram, thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, school board members, and Dr. Bert Song. I will be giving a high-level overview of our sixth accounting period, which ended December 31st, 2019, on monthly financials. While she's pulling up the, the report, revenue received as of the end of December is $155 million, or 45.6% of the total budget. This compares to 45% for the same time period in fiscal year 2019 and 43.2% in fiscal year 2018. Next page is on the expenditures for the same time period. Total expenditures and expenditures totaled about $143 million, or 42% of our total budget, which compares to 41.1% for the same time period in fiscal year 2019 and 41.6% for fiscal year 2018. Also attached in the financial report is a list of all budget transfers that were greater than $50,000 for the accounting period. Behind that is just another way of showing the expenditures, revenues and expenditures for the accounting period for December 31st. And what we've done is given you some footnotes of those variances that's 10% or higher. Are there any questions?
Any questions from board members? Mr. Jordan?
The footnote on, I guess it has the budget to actual child nutrition services. The footnote one, under revenues, oh, nope, I'm sorry, expenditures, says the year-to-year variance is due to an increase in the capital budget in 2020 and some timing expenditures. Can you just, kind of just clarify that for me, what, what that's...
Under the expenditure side?
So I'm looking at the, I never get the page numbers, no page numbers on here. So, the chart that has schedule of revenue and expenditures, budget to actual child nutrition services as of December 31st, 2019. And under expenditures, where it has capital, there's a footnote to the far right that has a one beside it. And then at the bottom, under expenditures, the one references an increase in the capital budget in 2020 and timing of expenditures. I was just trying to get a better understanding, what is, what exactly is that telling us?
That our budget for the current year is larger than the budget was for last year. And then also the expenditures for the two years are different. So with a larger budget and larger expenditures, you're going to see a greater increase when you look at the percent spent in last year because it was a smaller budget with less expenditures compared to a larger budget for this year. I didn't go into details to say exactly what those expenditures were, but that is basically a comparison of when child nutrition had expenditures in the two different years. But if you would like to know what those expenditures are, I could do further research.
I just was just trying, the, the capital increase and its impact on the school nutrition is what caught my attention. I couldn't really follow what was being communicated, but you can explain it to me at a later time.
Okay. Capital is just the expense line item, that the dollar amount is a capital expenditure if the expense is greater than $5,000. But I can give you better detail offline if you like.
If that's acceptable, that's fine with me.
All right. Any other questions? Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as presented?
I move to approve the financial report as presented.
Second. Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Okay, back to our norms and protocols, this will be now item 5.02. Ms. Bassin, as a compromise to your suggestion, since we're all going to do a better job of making sure that we're trying to keep items on the agenda, understand why we're asking for them, I'll accept removing the "not" from the board norms and allow them to be placed on as suggested. That's bear with everyone.
But what now? What, what are we doing?
So right now, Ms. Bassin has asked that we remove the norms and protocols from the, from, from the consent agenda so that we could vote on them separately, and her concern is that we have the word "not" removed on the item, placing items on the agenda.
So we're going to do the consent item, the consent agenda without doing the norms and protocol?
No, 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 we're voting on the norms and protocols right now because we moved, we removed them from the consent agenda.
We need to vote on whether we're removing the "not" because my understanding from our meeting last week was "not" was there. I'd like to even maybe perhaps check with the state trainers that came in because my memory is that there was a reason we put that in there. And so, without more discussion, I would prefer to just pull the whole thing out and discuss it at another meeting and, and vote on it next, next meeting, rather than, I wish this had come up for discussion during our meeting earlier. It's because I'm caught by surprise, and I need to think about it, and I'm sure Ms. Bassin would understand that, you know, it just caught me by surprise. And I, my memory was that we put it in there because we were trying to move that along because we'll be discussing items we put on the agenda when the discussion time comes and they come to the board. So that's just where I'm kind of standing right now.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate that, Ms. Campson. Ms. Smith?
I think I understand what Ms. Bassin is saying. I'd like to recommend that we behind request, we just say with a brief description because just stating the agenda item may not be clear. So I believe a brief description is needed, but we don't have to sit there and explain back and forth why we want this item on the agenda. So I think that would satisfy, I hope, Ms. Bassin, and it would still stay in the intent of this statement here. All right, I could, I, I...
Hold on, one second, Ms. Campson.
Okay, so I'm, point of order on everybody, just so we ring this back in. We need to put a motion on the floor for a particular action and then continue with the discussion on it. And so with that, I know that Ms. Bassin, are you going to make a motion?
No, I was just going to clarify, and I didn't mean to create alarm. You know, there are other typos in there, so I just wanted to be sure that, that it captured the intent of our discussion last week at the, during our governance training, and make sure that I was not off-base in, in my recollection of what we had agreed on. And there are some other minor typos, but this one, you know, can significantly change what is meant. So, if the board agrees that this is the way it was intended to be read, then I will go along. I just simply wanted to raise the fact that, is this a typo, or is this what we intended? If it is, then let's move ahead with taking a vote. And if during the next six months, as we practice this process that we've agreed to, if it is problematic, July, when we have a retreat and we reevaluate our norms and protocols, we can discuss it further.
So with that, Madam Chair, I'd like to move to adopt the board norms and protocol and reserve the opportunity to make, as the maker of the motion, to speak towards it.
So then, a second, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, now further discussion.
So, Madam Chair, I, I don't disagree with Ms. Bassin raising the concern at all. What I think what we have to do is look at this particular one and the conversation that we had with our governance training over the last, those last two days, is just governing ourselves better. And as I had spoke to Madam Chair here, is setting some parameters around for discussion time because we know, we don't want to be here all night, we don't want to keep the community here all night. But if we say that we have two, three minutes each to speak, that we should be able to formulate our, our thoughts within that timeframe and be able to explain, and then, you know, keep it moving, the seven of us, so that we can get that going. So with that, and I guess what I'll just put in that one, just for the, I'll amend my own motion, that if there are other identifiable typos, that we correct those, and, you know, as long as it does not change the, the intent. Dr. Gabriel?
Yes. Mr. Jordan?
So I, I think where the, where there might be some confusion, and we discussed this in governance training, as I understood it, the bullet, the first bullet is at one meeting, and the action of the consensus is at a separate meeting. So what I thought we talked about was at the, that there would be a time at the work session or at a business meeting where each individual would state what they wanted on the agenda, and it wouldn't be discussion time at that time. And so we would have this running list of items that would, whether it was coming from the board or from the administration, of future agenda items. And then at some point in time, we would prioritize them because we may find that several of the agenda items are saying the same thing. So there would be some process where we would consolidate and smooth them over. And then when it came time to actually decide what and when, that was what required the consensus at a separate meeting. And I think the point that Ms. Bassin brings forward is, if my recollection of that is correct, I don't think it's clear here that one bullet is talking about one meeting, and the second bullet where it describes the consensus is really a second meeting or some future meeting once we have identified what the items are. So, if I stated that correctly, it may just be a matter of just clarifying that we're not saying that we're going to state the item and try to arrive at consensus at the same meeting. Otherwise, it defeats the very thing that Mr. Clanton just talked about.
So, Mr. Jordan?
So if we identified it on the agenda at the two separate times, so I think we were talking about it during board matters, we would kind of state those items there, and then like we come to the work session and we place it on the agenda there, that this is a time that we're looking for consensus for what we would put on. We could use the agenda as a way of kind of identifying it, right?
Right. You and I are saying the same thing?
We're saying the same thing.
Right, so I think that the piece that was, so in the preceding statement where it says work session, agenda, I think that wording is what is causing some confusion. So if we were just able to break it up, that might help, and whether we do that tonight or later is fine. But I think that's where that confusion was, and I think we kind of talked about it some also last, last week. But it's, I don't, I don't have any objection to what's there, I just think the clarification of it is what Ms. Bassin has brought forward.
Understood, understood. Ms. Campson?
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. I think that kind of clarifies. I, I needed time to think about it. I thought we were discussing consent items earlier so that it was, if we put it on, we all agreed to it. I didn't, so I wasn't expecting something to come up. My understanding was, at the very end of a long meeting, that when people ask for items to be put on the agenda, which they need a time to do that, that that would be something we wanted to do quickly, and then we would then have the, just as Mr. Jordan said, have, have the discussion. So I remembered that was why the word "not" was put in there, so that, because when we started doing this a couple of months ago, some, sometimes we all would talk too much about the agenda item we wanted to be put on, and the evening would drag on and on and on. And so that was why we wrote it this way. So I remembered it being written this way. I actually was trying to find the email from Savannah that listed what they sent to us, and I could, I'm not...
Samantha. Samantha's... It is getting, okay.
Whatever her name is, that nice lady that was one of our leaders in our discussion.
Yes, she's watching now.
So that was why, and, and I just hadn't had time to think about it. I certainly want to have this approved, and I certainly don't want to put it off to the retreat, but I, that was how I understood it, and I hadn't had a chance, we didn't get a chance to talk about it earlier. So, what Mr. Jordan said was what I remembered. And that was, that was what was written, and that was why it was written this way. I didn't look at this as a typo, I looked at it as a change in the document.
If I may, I recall that the word was added because the trainers had an opportunity to watch clips of the board meetings, and they suggested that time be limited for discussion around agenda items. They were very clear about saying that that was inappropriate and that, that was definitely prolonging the meetings unnecessarily. So I do recall that specifically.
So right now, we have a motion on the floor to approve the document as it is presented with the ability to correct some of the typos that do not change the intention of the document. I would consider this to be, again, a document that we can always come back and revisit. Perhaps we approve it for right now, knowing that we need to come back and discuss exactly what Mr. Jordan and Mr. Clanton had suggested about the, the discussion points, and, and make it a point to, to come back and allocate some time for that. So, I would like to go ahead and have Ms. Tanner call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye, thank you. The next, the next item on the agenda, which would be item 5.03, motion to amend the school start times. Now, there is a resolution that we have before us. As we know, at our last work session, Dr. Bert Song and staff came before the board and discussed a proposal to amend the resolution due to some of the serious concerns that they had with regards to starting September of 2020, which, Dr. Bert Song, I, I do recall you saying that if this is the will of the board, that you would certainly be able to make it happen. However, you also wanted to share your expert opinion with your staff and what you thought in your role as the acting superintendent, what would be best for students and staff. And so before us right now, and I'm trying to pull it up right here, we have a motion to amend the start time. So, is there someone on the floor that would like to read the amended resolution?
Madam Chair, resolution of the city, of the Norfolk City School Board concerning school start times. Whereas we recognize and acknowledge that significant national research and study, study has been conducted regarding the positive effects of school start times, and whereas we acknowledge that a change in school start times will provide for better students' health benefits and, and school performance, as well as being identified as a single intervention that could provide many benefits for teens. And whereas we remain firmly committed to this resolution passed on February 20th, 2019, that approved changing school start times, and whereas we acknowledge the challenges the administration has faced in meeting the timeframe set forth in that resolution. Therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the city of Norfolk defers implementation of changing school start times until 2021, 2022 school year, whose superintendent shall continue to move forward with logistical planning and community engagement, and be it further resolved that the school board directs the superintendent to report back no later than June 2020 regarding updates on implementation.
Thank you very much, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. I will now open the floor for discussion. I would like to start by limiting discussion to two minutes. Members, discussion?
Madam Chair, as the maker of the motion, I'd like to speak first. So, with the resolution, I'm putting this forth as a maker of the motion. I'm putting this forth as a maker of the motion, so that we can have discussion and to be definitive on it as to the direction we want the administration to go. I appreciate the parents who have come here this evening to express their concerns regarding this matter. I've listened to my constituents, I've listened to parents who have, and I've brought this up, many individuals in a lot of our urban neighborhoods require and lean upon their high school students to work, to support their households, and also to take care of other younger students that come in. I also listened and had a reflection back to when I was in high school. I got to Maury High School at 6:30 in the morning, because I went to the governor's school for the arts, and so I had to go there for the other half of the day. I didn't get home from school, because if we were in production time, I didn't get home until 8:00, 8:30 at night. Had to do homework, get back up, do the same thing the next day. It is grueling. But I think I'm okay. I survived. But I too understand, having been on this side, the challenges, and we've had those things brought forward to us regarding rolling this out. We're the lone standing school division on the South Side, who still has us even in the works. Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Portsmouth, all the other ones have pulled back, because it's not very easy to implement. It is going to require additional funds for the lighting and everything else there. But I'm a strong believer in, if we're going to do something, and it's going to affect our kids, I want to make sure we do it right. So as much as I do not like the fact that we have committed something, and I voted for this resolution, because I'm committed to it. I am committed to the school start time change. But if my administrators can't tell me that, hey, we're going to be definitive, that we're going to be able to roll out, and I've heard things, because it's been stated, oh, we're using my two minutes, thanks. God should have told me, I would have wrapped this up quick. But I'm just going to say this, that we're not going to have a cost savings in buses. We're not going to fix the stagger, because right now, they said that to us. So I'm not deciding yet.
Okay. Ms. Bassin, and then I'll come back to Ms. Campson.
Thank you. We have been talking about this for a few years. The benefits are there, not only for our high school students, but for our younger students as well. They're ready to, our younger students are ready to learn early in the morning. And just like Mr. Clanton, I too have talked to my constituents, as well as families that are not in the ward that I serve, because I serve the whole district. I have heard that people are ready. In the last two weeks, I've been approached by several people about why we would be delaying the start time yet again. On October 2nd, we received, I thought, a detailed update about the progress, the great progress that had been made toward implementing later start times in this division. We can be the leaders, and we are not the only, we would not be the only ones. Chesapeake has been doing this right for years, at 8:25 start time for their high school students. So I think it's time to take the leap. There's no better time to do the right thing than now. And I'm not going to support a delay in the start times. We have, as many speakers said tonight, we have several months before the implementation would take place. On May 2018, there was also discussion, aside from the health benefits that would come along with this, significant efficiencies that would be garnered with transportation. And also, to address some of the concerns of speakers of our younger children, we already pick up children, elementary school children, before 7:00 a.m., and they sit on very long bus rides. So we are already doing that. And with this new change, we could drastically reduce the amount of time that our young students are sitting on a bus or waiting at a bus stop. So again, I think we can do it. Now's the time to do it right, and I'm not going to support delaying the start times.
Thank you. Ms. Campson, then Ms. Martin, then?
When it was brought to our attention recently, that we were not on track for the start time that we had voted for and approved and directed to begin work on a year ago, I was shocked and very disappointed, as I expressed at the time. And, but I thought, well, what can you do? They're not ready. But the more I thought about it, and the more I could talk about, a deadline is a deadline is a deadline. You can't keep postponing and kicking it down the road. Because originally, when I was here, we were talking about 2019, and last year, we voted, much to Ms. Bassin's concerns, that we give them another year. That another year would be good. And so we gave them another year. You know, I was an elementary school teacher, and spent most of my life in elementary schools, and the little kids come in, and they've been up since hours. And they're all crashing by four o'clock. And I've also been in high school. I was at Granby High School. I know everyone thinks I'm only elementary, but, and I saw what happened for a spell, because I had a first spell reading remediation class, and they weren't there. So all the research is there, it's right. I'm rethinking, I'm sorry that I backed down at the last meeting, to be honest, because a direction is a direction. I don't know how we could be a year later, and it's not done. Someone needs to be accountable for that. You know, I'd like to hear a presentation from the transportation person about why nothing's happened over the last year. So I will be voting against this resolution, because I support what we had already determined to do. We already had the debates about what was right and what was wrong for children. We had that debate, and we voted to move ahead with start times. We delayed it one year. Let's get it done next year. I'm voting no.
Okay. Ms. Martin?
Yeah, I'm not here to debate the merits of later start times and the impacts of health, the children's health, and so forth. I mean, we've gone over that and over that so many times. And I think we all agree that we want, we obviously vote for it, right? So we want to, we want to do what's right for the best, the health of our children. But I'm a bit concerned, because in our board training, which we've had a lot of, more training than any other connected body, we talk about this, where we say we want to have something done, and the, that we give that to our one employee, which is the superintendent. Now, that person has changed since we passed this vote, and so has a lot of our lead administration. And, and so they, you know, there have been a lot of changes and a lot of other things that had, have been really immediately needing to be addressed with the new administration, or the current administration. And so I understand that. And I feel very uncomfortable forcing something. So when the superintendent comes back and says, we're not, we can't do this, we're not, we won't do it well, I feel very uncomfortable forcing that, because that's not what we're supposed to be doing as a governance team. And I understand accountability, but I also have children who are, who take the bus to school, to and from school. And, and you know, the intention was also to eliminate the fourth stagger in order to make this right. But if you don't feel, the administration's telling us, we're not ready to do that properly, I just, I really have, I really have a hard time saying, you know, forcing it again. I mean, it's just, it's not making a lot of sense to me. I would really feel comfortable having, you know, deferring this vote, and having a better discussion, because this has definitely raised more questions. But, but right now, I really have to follow what our governance training's telling us, what my, my experience with, with our administration's telling us. And I'm saying that I need, we need to delay this, until we can do this properly.
Ms. Smith?
This is about accountability. And we've laid down the groundwork for this over the past two school years. And it's time for us to make a decision regarding this topic. And if, someone said it earlier, this doesn't have to be an all or nothing type vote. We can identify those things that we can accomplish, and accomplish them by the next school year, and then we can identify those that can be delayed. But without anything in front of us, I don't see why we can't move forward with what we told our citizens, our students, our teachers, that we were going to do. So I don't support the resolution.
Dr. Gabriel?
Mr. Jordan?
I know my two minutes is going to start, as part of that, what I really was hoping we would do is get a presentation from the administration, really just speaking to the options that we have before us. We're having this discussion around the resolution. I'm still not really clear on specifically what we're saying we would do in the future, or what we would do now. So I, following the work session, I went back and looked at the options. And at the October 2nd work session, we spoke to specific options. There was an option A1, there was an option A2. There was trying to get $3 million to do everything. At one time, there was $940,000 in terms of capital investment. And then, as others have mentioned, what was described was around the reduction in bus runs, the significant cut in the longest run from 120 minutes to 40 minutes, and other things. So to me, what would be helpful for, prior to the vote, is just having a presentation or an update from the administration, so we are clear when we say what we are delaying. Are we delaying the implementation of an option? Are we starting from scratch? I mean, what exactly are we, are we saying that we're doing in terms of the resolution? And then, once I'm better understanding of that, then I would be able to give better comment on where I am. But right now, my intent was to support, not the resolution, but to support the moving forward with the early start times, based upon either option one or option two, as was presented to us in October.
Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, and concerns citizens of Norfolk. Although I'm not able to vote on this resolution, I would just like everyone to know, I understand your interactions with Norfolk Public School students. They're either children, or you've spoken to them one-on-one as members of the board, teachers, principals, so on. But as a student myself, I am in support of this. However, student athletes, and club members, and children who do not have the support at home that I am blessed with, may have a hard time with this. Student athletes get home late after practice. It'll be late. They have homework. They may have a job. They may have younger siblings they have to take care of, because their mother is working two part-time jobs, just trying to support herself and her children. I would just like that for everyone, for that to be in the forefront of everyone's mind, that these kids will be affected positively and negatively because of this. They will be getting home later. They will be going to sleep later. Midnight, 1:00 a.m., they'll be getting up later. But the system, the cycle is still going to continue, despite starting schools later. And that is not a time issue. It is a issue that we can accomplish through classes, and societal, and things beyond the school board. But that is, that is something I would like everyone to keep in mind.
Thank you. Okay. So what I'd like to do then is, I'd like to share my thoughts. Dr. Birdsong, I'm going to support your recommendation to the board. I'm a pediatrician. I very much know the data. I support the data. I supported the data with my first vote and with my second vote. And I did share that I was very disappointed to know that we were not able to move forward with this, starting in 2020. But it's not just the disappointment. I finally heard an answer as to why. We have had turnover in the lead partner with cooperative strategies. We have had a turnover in our superintendent. We have had turnover in almost that all of the top staff members of administration. We do not have a guarantee that a fourth stagger will be eliminated. I'm going to repeat that. We do not have a guarantee that a fourth stagger could be eliminated, and that we could save money. And while we did have a very robust presentation in October, I believe that since we have different individuals now in this capacity of advising us, they are looking at it, and they are seeing that the data is not reflective of it. And that is upsetting to me, because I feel like I was told one thing, and now I'm being told something different. But I have to trust the experts. We are talking about 30,000 children here. Additionally, I also believe in doing something with fidelity, and making sure that it gets off to a successful start. And that is why I am going to hold Dr. Birdsong and team accountable to what they say they will do with regards to timelines, implementation, communication rollout, everything. I am not backing away from making this division stay true to a promise of what data reflects, the benefits. However, we need to make sure that we are going to roll this launch out properly and successfully. I don't want us to rush into something if the boots on the ground, if the soldiers are telling us, we can't handle it. We have a number of schools that are still fighting to make accreditation. We have buildings here that still need desperate repairs. It would be very hard to justify $4 million for lights, when we know we need roofs and air conditioning units. And I'm sorry, but these are the choices that we have as a school board. I am not saying that we are putting this idea on the shelf and not coming back to it. But we need proper planning. And it bothers me to have to listen to such great testimony from our parents, from students, and all of that. But I have to rely on what the capabilities are of our staff. And I have to hold them accountable, but yet be ready to support them in the needs that they have. And I fully believe that Dr. Birdsong, you and your team will be able to come to us and tell us what it is that is necessary for this rollout to occur successfully. So that being said, we do have a resolution before us. I would like us to take a vote. And if we need to come back and revisit it, that's our ability to do so. And, and we can make that happen. So
Dr. Gabriel?
Yes, Mr. Jordan?
Just, just for clarity, so there's some numbers you threw out, and I was saying earlier, I was just trying to get some clarity around exactly what we're voting on, because, if I may, because you were just mentioning $4 million. I'm not sure where that figure came from.
It is $3.7 million. And what we are voting on is the resolution that is presented before us. That is exactly what we are voting on. And I know that you had asked for a presentation, but we had a presentation at the work session. So what we are voting on is the resolution before us.
Which?
Ms. Bassin?
And, and just to clarify, we had, on October 2nd, there were, as Mr. Jordan stated earlier, options that were put before us. One was an option to ask for 3 million, up to, from 3 million to 3.7 million, or to implement a phase-in plan for, for field lighting and the other needs of our school division. That is the piece that I think is missing, is that we haven't had an updated discussion about where we are with those options.
Okay. So what I would say is that we had a work session, and there is always the ability to bring forth questions after the work session to Dr. Birdsong. Did you email Dr. Birdsong with any of those questions, knowing that they were going to put forth a resolution to delay the start times?
I did.
On Tuesday? Yesterday evening?
Whenever it was.
Okay.
If I may, what we presented, I believe it was in October, it was to move forward, not in a phased approach, because we were asked to go back and look at the various options. And when we met as an ELT, the ELT Executive Leadership Team decided that it would be in the best interest, if we were to move for it, to move for it full speed ahead, and not in a phased-in option. That is the option that was presented and discussed.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong.
Just clarity, so Dr. Birdsong, with the discussion that you had with the executive leadership team, with the decision to move full steam ahead, as a result of that move full steam ahead, is this why we're asking for now the additional time? And with that still, with that thinking, of moving full steam ahead?
Because when we presented that information, we did feel like we were on track and ready to go, ready to implement for next year. And as some of the experts continued to work with the data, and looking at different things, especially in the area of transportation and the staggered schedules, it was concerning that that was not, it would, it's not 100% that we would be able to take a stagger off, which of course, was very concerning to us. And we did have that conversation. And without being able to do that, the plan would fail.
Okay. So I'd like to go ahead and call the roll. Ms. Tanner?
Bassin?
Nay.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Planton?
Nay.
Nay.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Gabriel?
Aye. The motion, uh, fails, and we will be moving forward with, uh, the original motion that has been set forth for the school start times for September 2020. Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is our school board code of conduct, item five point zero four. So we had governance training, um, last Thursday and Friday, and a part of our governance training was to, um, have discussion around adoption of a code of conduct. And with that, we have a code of conduct that the school board has agreed to adopt, and we will all be signing, and it will be hung in our boardroom. And this helps to, again, let our stakeholders know what we have committed to as school board members. What I'd like to have is a motion on the floor to adopt the V S B A code of conduct.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the, uh, V S B A code of conduct as the Norfolk City School Board's code of conduct.
I second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Planton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Citizens' comments on non-agenda items. And I'll just remind everybody, the podium can be adjusted to suit your height. You have three minutes. Write your name if you have a child in the system. Um, and please, uh, stick to the three-minute timeframe. Ms. Tanner?
Yes, we have twelve speakers, and the first one is Mary Bauer, followed by Rosemary Delgado.
Good evening, Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Gabriel, and members of the board. My name is Mary Bowers. I'm a parent, um, at Larchmont Elementary School. Whitney Davis, who is, um, one of the spearhead leaders of the local chapter of more recess for Virginians for our Norfolk chapter, could not be here tonight, so I'm reading, um, her statement. For over a year now, more recess for Virginians Norfolk has been calling for 2020 by 2020, which is an additional recess period of twenty minutes to be added for our K through five students. Our goal was partially realized with the recess pilot program. Thank you all for your support of that, and we all, we are very happy for the kindergarten and first graders at the pilot program schools. We know free play is crucial for all of our elementary school students. Tonight, I wanted to reiterate the goal of more recess for Virginians Norfolk. Our new goal is for recess policy change that would add twenty minutes for K through five in all of our schools and will be effective for the 2020 to 2021 school year. All of the elementary students in our district should have access to the innumerable benefits of free play. More recess is an ally to academics. More recess is a stress reliever for our kids in a time of rising school stress. More recess promotes out-of-the-box higher-order thinking. More recess nurtures healthy social and emotional growth and physical well-being. More recess diversifies the way kids learn. More recess is allowed by law to be up to fifty minutes long daily, and more recess is free. Our kids need and deserve 2020 by 2020. They should not be made to wait another year for a better learning experience. Thank you, um, for your support of this important initiative.
Rosemary Delgado, followed by Crystal Law.
Good evening again, members of the board. Dr. Birdsong, my name is Rosemary Delgado, and as I stated, I have, um, two young children. Um, they do go to Sherwood Forest Elementary School, which is, um, in one of the lower socioeconomic districts, if you're not aware. Um, and all the discussion of four million dollars for lights, can we get a school fixed first? Please. They're little. Please. Like, I beg you. Um, on next, I wasn't planning on saying that. I, I had a whole speech, but this, I'm very passionate, as you know, every time I speak, I am overtaken with, um, emotion. Um, there are a couple of things, like Virginia Beach, um, they remodeled, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm reading the article, um, where Dr. Birdsong was, um, signed on for a little bit longer, um, that was in the Virginia Pilot, um, and that we modeled some things after Virginia Beach. Um, the difference with Virginia Beach that I see, they act, they don't just send out letters. I need to see something tangible that is being done for my children, for every child at that school. This is something that needs to be addressed immediately, just like when you have a switch of administration ahead where everything stops, and now we have to address this immediately. Our children need this. Seriously, they need this. Um, I'm going to cut everything short because I got off of the subject and won't be able to complete it. Um, I will send it in an email, um, but I do hope that you will continue to consider capital improvements for Sherwood Forest Elementary. Because again, one day, your livelihoods will be in their hands if you stay in this area. I mean, we have to show them that they count, all of them, not just the kids that are in the wealthier school districts and have both working parents at home and have a better life. They count.
Crystal Law, followed by Rachel Donahue.
Good evening to all the board members, Dr. Birdsong, um, Dr. Gabriel. Thank you for your comment that you made just a little bit ago. I've been sitting here for quite a while, listening to, um, various members of the board, talking about being a leader, talking about taking the lead, talking about, um, meeting deadlines. Um, I have a six-year-old first grader at Sherwood Forest Elementary School. I have a fourteen-year-old, uh, JV basketball player that goes to Maury, who's also in North Star Engineering and labeled as gifted. My kids are all I have. I'm a nurse. I work two jobs. I work sixty-five to seventy hours a week to make sure they get what they need. Can we get a deadline for capital improvements for my children's school, for my daughter's school at Sherwood? We're talking about field lighting for athletic programs, and my daughter's school is falling apart. The ceilings are leaking and in poor condition. They're literally falling down. Ceiling tiles are falling down and apart. They have buckets all through the school building when it rains. This is something you can see and walk in. The windows are in poor condition. The window frames are busted and broken. The vinyl in the side of the building is busted and broken. The wood framing of the building is busted and broken. We just got over a pest, a rodent infestation issue, and it's getting colder. They're going to be looking for somewhere to go here pretty soon. I haven't heard anything else from the school in regards to the pest control issues. I don't know what kind of maintenance surveillance is being done, if there are any issues still going on. Once again, nothing's being communicated to us. I've gone in the office multiple times and asked the office staff, hey, can we put in a report about this? Anybody noticed that the windows are falling out, et cetera, et cetera? I can't walk to my daughter's classroom to take her lunchbox when she forgets it, which I pack a lunch every day because I'm not comfortable with her eating in the cafeteria still. I can't walk her to class. I can't go pick her up. If I have a question about her homework, they don't allow me to walk to her classroom. And my personal belief, and nobody said this, is that they're scared we're going to see something or that we're looking for something. I want to go talk to my daughter's teacher face-to-face. I feel like if I'm trusting them with her, I should be able to walk to her classroom when I feel like it, as long as I go through the right protocol and procedure and show ID. It's ridiculous. My other concern is I feel like I'm not being heard. I've emailed, I've called the Department of Health, I called city board members, and the first thing out of everybody's mouth is, oh, Ms. Law, your child's safety, security, and concern is my utmost priority. No, it's my utmost priority. If I could afford to put her in private school, I would, but I can't. I'm doing the best I can with what I have, and I ask that you would consider that before you invest or bite off more than Norfolk City can chew, let's fix some of the stuff that's badly broken. Thank you.
Rachel Donahue, followed by Diane Outlaw.
Good evening, Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Gabriel, and the rest of the distinguished, uh, board. First, I would like to thank you for your continued efforts for our children. Um, my name is Rachel Donahue. I have been a resident of Norfolk for eighteen years and have served our city's wonderful children for almost seventeen. I have two amazing and intelligent children who are on the spectrum, who attend Lake Taylor High School and Blair's, uh, pre-med health and engineering program. My Blair student stream has been, has been able to be an engineer for quite a while, and he is one step closer now that he's in the program. I come to you tonight to discuss what I consider a problem that affects many families with children in this program, transportation or the lack of it. Many parents work during the hours our children attend schools, making it difficult for them to get to and from school. As a single parent on a teacher's budget, I have to pay someone to transport him to and from school because I have the same hours. Yet every other school and specialized program has transportation. When my son's transportation becomes sick, has to work, or oversleeps, I have to take time off to pick him up or drop him off. Some parents don't even have a mode of transportation. Blair's PMHE was his first choice, and he has worked hard to get accepted into this program. He is a straight A student. Who are we to tell him no because, uh, transportation is not provided? What about the children with no mode of transportation but have worked hard to get into this program? Is this fair? Is this truly an equal opportunity for all? I know these are a great deal of concerns to be addressed in our district and not enough means to do that. I know transportation is already an issue, but I beg you, as a parent and as a teacher, make it possible for all students who are accepted to choose this program and not have to worry about transportation. Allow my child to continue this program that he has worked hard to get into. I appreciate your time and hard work to make our district and our city a better place to live.
Diane Outlaw and Ellen, Dr. Ellen Fittson-Rider.
Good evening. I know I'm early and I'm asking you to come read Across America, but I do have a, uh, offer to you all. I have, uh, sent a, uh, email earlier. I'm Diane Outlaw, Executive Board of Education Association Norfolk. And on Monday, we saw a sea of people for going control. This Monday is the Virginia Education Association Lobby Day and Rally in Richmond. I am again extending the invitation to you, any of the people here. The PTA will be there, the panel at the council will be there, and I even have my sister organization that will be there. We will be there, we will lobby our legislator, who, in November, we won big time. Students and public schools win big in the Virginia election. We can't let it stop there. We need, we have celebrated that election, now we're going to mobilize. We know funding is needed. We got to reverse the reception error cuts and invest in our students. Teacher pay and retention, raising pay and expanding strategy to recruit and retain the best into t- our teaching field. We are concerned about school safety and mental health, to make sure students and staff are safe and that we have the resources and students, the resources that students need to address any mental health or counseling changes. And we have to undo that damage that, uh, the Madal administration did with about our continuing contract. Twenty-first century employees about the money. I'm sorry to say, but they're about the money. We have to, Norfolk Public School has to have something to offer. So on Monday, we will, if we get the approval of our superintendent, uh, because Governor Nor- Northern proposed budget for, uh, uh, K and twelfth grade education still faces challenge, is, um, we need a budget that's more bold. We didn't get that in December. Um, sure, he included funding to the budget to help at-risk students and to hire additional school counsel, but as a whole, his budget falls short of what our public schools need and what our students and educators deserve. So again, I ask you to join with us in a sea of red to ensure that this public school in Norfolk, other districts, get what we need to service our children, so our parents won't be here complaining about funding for building, funding for helping our special ed children, us in fact, uh, for getting, educators getting the professional development we need. So Monday, we will take off at eight o'clock if I get approval from the superintendent to go to Richmond and make it a, a sea of red again. Thank you.
Dr. Fittson-Rider, followed by Shuey Brennan. Shuey?
Good evening, board and Dr. Birdsong. My name is, uh, Dr. Ellen Fittson-Rider. I'm the parent of a Northside Middle School eighth grader, Shuey Brennan, who, she's going to go on her next three minutes. I have no paper today, not for you guys, not for me. I'm just tired. I, you know, the presentation we did last month together, Shuey and I actually presented it a second time at the CAC meeting, uh, that was a town hall at Bayview Elementary. And then I presented it myself to the Norfolk Commission on Disabilities last week. Um, Andrea McClellan from Norfolk City Council happened to be there, and I'm making plans now to present it to city council, um, with Shuey. But aside from that, just... This is what's called being an advocate, the thousands of hours I have spent over the past few years, the complaints to the VDOE with a hundred and twenty-six pages of supporting documentation, the consistent vigilance of just to make sure that all of Shuey's teachers and co-teachers have read her I E P and understand her accommodations. Shuey's a hard worker. She's compassionate. She's obviously very patient because it's almost nine o'clock, and we're actually here because she wanted to present tonight because she got a bug last month, and she said, you mean, everybody's going to be quiet and listen to me for three minutes? So, um, that's why we're here. It shouldn't be this way. Um, and honestly, I'm, I'm deflated because after sort of, I guess, this, what I thought was discovering that there is no accountability, a word that has been heard here tonight for special education, all the way down to that I E P table, nobody has any supervision over that. Um, I've been shooting arrows into fog for three years and wondering when I was going to talk to the one person who would step in and help fix things. I think where we are at Northside is as good as we're going to get. It's not perfect, and we have some decisions to make about that. We still have an English teacher who thinks Shuey can read a chapter of an eighth-grade level book all by herself and write a paragraph about it, when she really needs to comprehend a paragraph and write two or three sentences about it. I'm like, why is it January and we're still having this conversation? But that's been my life. So, um, anyway, I'm going to end early and let Shuey speak because that's why we're here tonight. So, thank you.
Reset it. Um, dear school board and Dr. Birdsong, my name is Shuey Brennan. I am in eighth grade at Northside Middle School. I want to talk today about bullying. Every day at school, there are some kids who bullying other kids. They teasing and hang on people. They make other kids feel bad. They use bad language like the S, F, and B words. There is a lot of wildness, sometimes take care- Sometimes security is called to break up a fight. Bullying, bullies pick on people who are different, kids who are smaller or younger or quieter. Bullies is teasing words. Some bullies tell me things like, "I am changing Chinese," or they make fun of me in front of my friends. It makes me feel bad. Bully makes me feel not safe. I'll tell a grown-up and tell they...
Go ahead.
They tell the kids to stop, but they tease again another one day. I see other kids get teased, and it makes them feel bad also. If I see someone who gets teased, I try to make them feel better. It's not good for anyone to have a bad day. Maybe people who are bullies are sad having a, or having a bad day, but it's not fair to be bad to other people. Last year, I was at Blair, and there were bullies there also. I don't know how to make people stop being a bully. If I tell a bully, they should be nice, they make fun of me. School should be a community. Kids should be nice and respectful to each other. Right now, everybody is not respectful of each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Brittany Diaz Chapman.
Hello, I'm Brittany Diaz Chapman. I'm the newly-elected president for Sherwood Forest Elementary School PTA. I'm here with my secretary as well, Rosemary Delgado, and same thing that she has spoke about and Crystal has spoken about as a parent of Sherwood Forest. My daughter is in pre-K. I'm new to Virginia altogether. We just recently moved here from California. My husband's in the Navy, and I will be a single parent for the next nine, or six to nine months, who knows? But start times, I was not aware of this until coming here. I know that that's something that has already kind of been passed and voted on that will start in 2020. I have to wake my daughter up at 8:30, and she is not happy to go to school. I have to force her to go to school. And yes, she does crash once she comes home around five. I don't foresee that being a better predicament, waking her up earlier, but enough said with that. The pests and lack of maintenance at our school is appalling. The fact that it made news should implore you to act faster, to be more diligent. But unfortunately, it seems like it's being put to the wayside, and things like lighting is more important. Now, I understand that these are important for our kids who are in sports, but having a safe and healthy environment to even go to school, I believe, is something that needs to be taken care of first. The security in the building, we aren't allowed to walk into the hallways, which I understand we need to go to the office first, check in, things like that. But even after that, I cannot walk my daughter down to the, her class, which was an issue recently for myself. My daughter broke her leg, and I tried to help her get used to walking in a cast, and she needed some additional help, but I was not able to do that. They needed to come pick her up and always have to come to the office and help, and that takes away from the other children in the class. Also, there was a gun brought to school. So if we are not able to walk down to the classroom and speak to our teachers or our children, I don't understand how a gun is also still being able to make it into the school by a fifth grader nonetheless. We also run a soup kitchen out of our kitchen. This needs to be taken care of for the health of people in the community as well. We don't have the updated budget for our school. We don't have the updated maintenance that has been done and still needs to be done, and we continue to request that.
Thank you. And Dr. Gable Baird Hicks, Patricia Reali, and Christian Turman were signed up, but they already spoke at the other session. And so that concludes our speakers from this list that I have.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item 5.06, Matters of the Board. Ms. Smith?
I would like to see us make a priority of having a report from our Facilities Committee, as well as for those of us who are newer than some of our colleagues on the board, an updated, an updated discussion or review of our facilities, our capital improvements, so that we can have a holistic idea of where our physical structures stand in terms of what they need, where the priorities are. As a part of that discussion, I'd like us to explore things like, and I might not say it correctly, but private-public partnerships. To me, we're constantly identifying what our problems are, but we don't do a good job of providing solutions to those problems, and we need to move away from that. So we don't have enough money outright for most of our facilities, but there are other opportunities out there available for us, and I'd like for us to begin exploring those types of opportunities and have this on the agenda to discuss. My other one is alternative education efforts. So we constantly talk about these suspensions, these expulsions, wraparound services, but we do not discuss it from a solution perspective, and we need to start becoming solution-based on everything that is presented to us so that we can make informed decisions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith, for those suggestions. If I may, refer also back to the presentation that Dr. Birdsong and staff made with regards to the capital improvement discussion that we had at the last work session. They identified a working group that was going to come together to blend in the Facilities Condition Index with the educational needs of each of the buildings. There's going to be set times when they meet with the community, reform the stakeholder group, and then deliver a report to the Board in June. So wholeheartedly agree, we need to have that big picture of what our facility needs are through the equity lens, through the lens of fiscal responsibility, and I believe in the norms and protocols, it does discuss reports from the various committees. So I'll make sure that we...
And how does our Facilities Committee fit into that?
The Facilities Committee, Mr. Clinton, Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, it's one of the standing committees. So based on the new norms and protocol, there'll be a section where we'll provide a written report, all of the standing committees, and then if need be, speak to it, and if not, it's just notes letting people know where we are every month.
Okay. Yep. Okay. All right. No other... Ms. Basine? Okay?
I just wanted to share, and Ms. Martin can chime in too as well. I just wanted to let you all know, we had a great meeting last Tuesday with our legislators. We met with several of them. We discussed our legislative priorities with them, all, I think, mostly positive, and it served as an education moment for them, for us to help explain why some of our priorities matter to Norfolk. And those items included teacher salary, included facilities, modernization of our buildings as well as maintenance, and also removing the cap on support positions. And so I just wanted to share that with everyone. I will be joining our EAN friends and NFT friends on Monday for Rally Day with some parents, so I think it helps to put a face with some of the work that we're doing on the school board. If anyone is wanting to go up there, you know, please feel free to reach out. And just wanted to share that. I don't know if she has anything that she'd like to add. There is an item, though, that we...
Still need to discuss.
Yeah, that we still need to discuss around collective bargaining. And so that was a piece that Ms. Martin, I think she raised that during our governance training to make sure that we have time to talk about it so that we can have a position on it for the next time we talk and meet with our legislators.
Wonderful. Ms. Martin?
Yeah, so because it's come up twice already about the facilities and funding, and I think it's really important that everyone here really, do your homework, understand where this money comes from and how it's generated, and understand that we are at the mercy of our state and local government, especially when it comes to facilities, and we are, we were beating the drum pretty hard on Tuesday with our legislators. And speaking of solutions, we were getting pretty creative, and there have been some things, there has been something and others, but in particular that have been done around the state that we have to discuss as a board that could, and not just as a board but as a city, and that may be able to help our situation. I think we deserve it. I think our students deserve it. And if I hear the, you know, when I came on the board a year and a half ago and I heard, "Oh, the recession," oh, "the recession" was like used for every excuse, and I thought, you know, I thought about it, and especially looking at these caps in the schools, and that was thirteen years ago. And I had to remind people that those students who have gone without the support services that they need are now in eighth grade, since over a decade. We cannot use that as an excuse anymore. We know our economy's cyclical. What are they going to do whenever there's another recession, right? This isn't, we're not asking for backfill pay on these things that they've capped, on these services that our students serve that they've capped, but we are asking them to reinstate them, and even if they have to do it a little bit at a time, there needs to be a plan moving forward, and our children deserve that. So I just want to know that we are looking at some solutions, getting more creative, and really looking to work more closely with our city and really join forces in advocating to our state representatives.
Mr. Clinton?
I'll yield, because you've got seniority on the board.
Mr. Jordan?
That wasn't a joke, y'all. I'm really trying to be...
I appreciate that. It's nice for it to work to my advantage every now and then. I just wanted to go back. I've long been an advocate for the Board's position, at least past Board's positions around taking things off of the administration's plate so they could prioritize those things that we place on the plate. And, you know, for the upcoming work session, I know that there's a to-be-determined time slot for educational planning. I would like to ask, pending whatever discussions may have already been considered, if we could take some time during that portion of the work session and come back and get a updated assessment of the options that were presented related to the school's start times, especially as I've heard in the discussion around staggers and transportation, some of that I just felt was new to me. And I think that, you know, having an opportunity to just make sure we're clear on where we are and what we're asking the administration to do, and also frankly, being open and willing to hear based upon our actions if there are some other things that the administration would like to recommend that we reconsider if we are taxing, taxing them too much. And so I think with the conversation I know we had at the Facilities Committee meeting following the last meeting, along with the discussion we just had with the start times, I think it would give us an opportunity to kind of see, is the work aligning even at this early stage so that we're not in this viewpoint where we're, you know, one thing versus, versus the other? You know, I've said before that there's some money that the city had on its side when we worked on the funding formula associated with the Lambert's Point golf course sale. We know we need sixteen million dollars in maintenance, and we're not going to solve that with that money. But if some things have shifted that allow us to align these things and to ease some of the stress on the administration in some other areas, I think that Educational Planning Section on the February 5th work session would be worthy for us to have that update and have that conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Clinton?
All right. Thank you. I just want to publicly acknowledge State Delegate Jay Jones and the article that he did addressing the issue of facilities and his colleague in the General Assembly, both in our urban and rural areas, and the charge that he's taking and leading and listening to our concerns and identifying additional funds at the state level and putting forth bills to support us there. The last item that I want to address is I want to publicly say thank you to all of my colleagues on the Board. We had two days of governance training, and for those who may have come in, I think that it was very productive, and we are really working, just as much as we voted on the Board norms and protocol and looking at the code of conduct, to demonstrate to our, to the community, to our students, to our teachers and our staff, that we're working on being colleagues versus adversaries, and listening, not to listen to respond, but listen to find out where we can find common ground and work from there. So I hope that you were able, even when we had differences this evening, were able to see that we're trying to make that effort, and in 2020, we're putting 2020 vision as a Board to be focused on what truly matters, and that's putting kids first. So I just want to say thanks to all of my colleagues, and I appreciate your ass. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Clinton. And I'll just conclude with stating that every day is a day for advocacy, and even though we have our General Assembly delegates and senators, and it's never too late or early to pick up a phone, write a letter, send them an email. All politics are local, and I believe that that is why I felt compelled to be on this Board, to have the biggest impact. Our budget is the largest portion of the city's budget. It is the largest portion of the state's budget. Unfortunately, I will not be able to join you guys on Monday because I'll be seeing patients, but I do plan to go up to Richmond and tell them exactly what the needs are of Norfolk Public Schools based on the legislative priorities that we have adopted. And so make time for it. They do like to see us. They are the ones who we have voted in to make the decisions regarding the budget that directly impact school maintenance, that directly impacts staffing. It is very important. And again, I would just like to thank all of the members who came to speak this evening on areas that they are passionate about. I know that we are all here for the children. So I thank you all for attending, and I now officially adjourn the meeting.